That's right. Let me put out the resume what they did and I go, I don't care. A lot of great things they've done. Why do you need to do that?
What?
For your website.
Okay, good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council work session for Tuesday, July 5th. We do have a recognition on our agenda this evening, but I believe Mr. Hoover's not here yet, so we're going to skip and come back to it, okay? So we'll move on with any items that need to be discussed. Nothing is marked by the staff up until the regular agenda. So anything on pages one, two, three, and four prior to the regular agenda that anyone would like to discuss in particular? None? Okay, we'll move on to under Public Services. We have B1, which is marked for discussion by the staff.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Item number one is a resolution approving amendment to our current wastewater treatment agreement with Cedar Rapids. In the existing agreement, we had a deadline of June 30th, 2022, to come to a provision of what our capacity needs are going to be in the next 20 years. Cedar Rapids agreed to allow us an extension of six months, and so that's what's coming before you, and we're going to recommend approval on that.
So the amendment is simply extending the time?
That is correct. It's a deadline that was in the original agreement.
Okay. Is that clear for everybody? Any questions? Discussion, anything on that? Go ahead.
Just, just a comment, Ryan. I noticed in there you had the timeframe for that activity to be 7-1. I think it said 19. That might have been a typo, but through 12-31-22 is, is-
Correct. 12-31-22, so it'll be at six months.
Okay, the start date, I think that's actually in the staff memo says 7-1-19 for start date.
I apologize.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was-
Yeah, that, that was the, when the original agreement was approved.
But I will say the good news there is, I think you were starting to anticipate that that was going to be my question. So, thank you.
Okay, anything else on that item? None? Okay, then we'll move on to B2.
Yes, Your Honor, B2. This is awarding a, the RFP we had for the solid waste collection system to study to SCS engineers. On June 3rd, we listened to RFP, and we talked to quite a few firms. Only one firm really responded to us, so that was our CS. Staff has reviewed it. Public Service Board is recommending approval. This is, this was an item that was budgeted in fiscal year '22 for $150,000. We're going to carry that forward. SCS concluded that this study should cost about $135,500. So you go to the next slide. These are some of the recent studies that they've concluded. We got a couple in Iowa as well as Nebraska. So we're pretty happy with the proposal the way it is.
Okay, so the agenda item on Thursday is to approve that-
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, award the RFP to them, then we'll be back next council meeting to approve the contract.
With an actual contract. Okay. Is that clear? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, Ryan, just one clarification. I didn't see anything in there for estimated time to completion, so will that be coming up after you finalize the contract?
Yeah, we're going to meet next Tuesday. We're going to put together a timeline. We got an idea, but we want to finalize that. When we come back for the contract approval, we'll share that with the city council.
All right. Okay, is that it on that item, Ryan? Okay, B3, is that yours also?
It is. And this is a motion to approve the project calendar for the pre-engineered metal building package for the new public services facility. As we have everything scheduled, the bids will be due July 20th at 11:00 a.m. here at City Hall. The public hearing will be scheduled for July 21st, that Thursday. Right now, the engineer's estimate is just over $4.2 million. And then we also have a bid alternate in this package. It's to look at, or it's to incorporate a bid for a hardened steel structure. We talked to the council about that, I think, earlier this spring. The schedule right now looks to be June of 2023, and so we were facing quite, quite a lead time on steel right now. We're hoping that will get bumped up, but we think that's probably going to be still, so.
Questions?
Your Honor, go ahead. Yeah, actually, and this may be, applies to the next item. Can you just refresh our memory as to what the role of Conlon is in this work?
So Conlon is our construction manager. They're our construction advisors, so they'll facilitate and organize basically the whole project at this point. And then Shive Hattrey's our, our design team.
Okay. All right, so all the, all the supporting trades and subcontractors will be working under the direction of Conlon.
That is correct.
Great. Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Okay, B4, is that yours also?
Yes, Your Honor. And this is a motion to approve the project calendar for the foundation repair package. Right now, the way we have this scheduled, the bids would be due August 4th, and then the public hearing would be scheduled for August 18th. Engineer's estimate is about $290,000 to complete the repairs. Right now, we have the schedule that the repairs would be completed by December 2nd.
Okay, questions? Okay. So are we ready for the presentation? All right. We're going to go back to the beginning of the agenda. We have a special recognition this evening, and our interim fire chief is ready to make the presentation.
Your Honor, counsel, thank you. I'd like to welcome former Lieutenant Jeff Hoover to the front of the room. Lieutenant Hoover retired from the fire department in early June after 24 years of service to our community. I can tell you that standing here now, as Jeff out of his comfort zone, has he not been one to volunteer to be in the spotlight or front and center? One thing I can assure you of, though, is that he has found himself there throughout his career due to his work ethic and dedication to the department. Jeff rarely questioned what needed to be done, but rather put on his gear and completed the task before others, so much that it drove others into competition with him, whether it's for evening chores or to be the first one to the truck. It is well-known to our staff that some of the best harmless firehouse pranks had the name Hoover attached to them. His witty sense of humor and ability to decorate someone's office are second to none. All joking aside, though, Lieutenant Hoover's exemplary member of the fire department's core values: professionalism, respect, integrity, dedication, and excellence. Jeff was one of our recipients of the 2017 Sullivan Brothers Award for Valor, in which he and others rescued a semi-driver from the cab of his tractor that was submerged in water on a snowy day. Another notable accomplishment for Lieutenant Hoover, and one he is most devoted to, was being the team leader of our tactical medic program. He selflessly offered personal time and supplies to the program, aspiring to make it the best. And if asked, every SRT and tactical medic member would tell you the same. He was very dedicated to that position. Beyond Jeff's work ethic and accomplishments, he maintained the ability to stay positive, inspire his crew, and make work enjoyable. Jeff, I want to say thank you and best wishes to you and your family moving forward. Here's a plaque from the department in recognition of your 24 years of service in the Marion Fire Department and community.
Thank you.
Jeff, on behalf of the city council and all our staff and all 41,535 Marion residents, I would like to also thank you for your years of service, your commitment to excellence that, and, and the service to the residents of Marion and keeping them and their property safe, to all the contributions you've made to, to, to make our fire department a standout department and just making us all look good. So we really appreciate your service. Well, we have a plaque for you also from the city, although with the timing of the holiday, it didn't get delivered, but we have a stunt double here. It's a certificate that's temporary, but we'll have your, we'll have your plaque probably tomorrow. This is a certificate of appreciation to Jeff Hoover and appreciation of your 24 years of dedicated and devoted service to the city of Marion and its residents.
All the people that I've worked with. It's fantastic apartment. I can't imagine a better department, better people, and couldn't miss it.
It's really great to see all the fire department personnel here to support your, your fellow firefighter. So thank you all for being here. Okay, we'll return to the agenda. And we are on public safety now, I believe, correct? Okay. Item C1 is the next item that's marked for, for discussion. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. My understanding was that you guys wanted, the wish was for me to go ahead and read the changes that you, that were requested by council real quick before we get started with this. Again, this has to do with Chapter 75 of the Marion Code, altering vehicles, snowmobiles, and off-road utility vehicles. One of the changes that was requested by council is under 7504, places of operation. Subsection 2 reads, properly equipped UTVs may be operated upon any city roadway with a speed limit of 35 miles per hour or less except 10th Avenue, Business 151, east of 35th Street, and East Post Road, south of Oak Brook Drive. Roadways are defined as the portion of a highway improved, designed, or ordinarily used for vehicular traffic. Moving on to the next change requested by council, it's under 75.05 requirements for UTVs. Number four, this wasn't a change, but it started out the same. UTVs may only be operated on the roadways between the hours, and then this was what was requested by council of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Subsection 5, operators of UTVs must adhere to noise restrictions set forth under Marion Code, Chapter 53. Then we go down, same section 7505, five requirements for UTVs. Subsection 9, this one's a little lengthy, but all occupants, except as noted below, must wear safety belts or safety harnesses which meet the definition of a safety belt or safety harness set forth by Iowa Code 321-445, which is the seatbelt law, while the UTV is in motion. Again, subsection A, under nine, children under one-year-old and weighing less than 20 pounds must be secured in a rear-facing child restraint system while the UTV is in motion. B, children ages one to six years must be secured in a child restraint system, safety, safety seat or booster seat while the UTV is in motion. Under B, there is subsection A. A child restraint system is a specifically designed seating system, including a belt, positioning seat or booster seat which meets federal motor vehicle safety standards. The child restraint system must be used in accordance with the manufacturer's instructions. The child must be secured in the child restraint, and the child must be properly secured to the UTV. C, no animals will be transported in the cargo portion or bed, I'm sorry, or bed of a UTV unless they are contained within an enclosure secured to the UTV. Then finally, we go down to 7509, which is scheduled offenses and fines. The following scheduled fines are fixed for violations of the designated sections of this chapter. Subsection 1, for violations of 7504, which is places of operation, A, first offense, $50 fine. B, second offense, $100 committed within one calendar year. C, third and subsequent offense or offenses, $200 committed within one calendar year. Subsection 2, for violations of 7505 requirements for UTVs, except for 7505 subsection 5, A, first offense, $75 fine. B, second offense, $150 fine committed within one calendar year. C, third and subsequent offense, $300 committed within one calendar year. Three, for violations of 75.05 subsection 5, noise and noise limits, all offenses, $25 fine.
Okay. Questions?
This may have been covered when I was gone, but what's the exception? Why, I'm trying to pull this up on the map, for the 35, when it relates to the 10th Avenue, 35th Street, what's that carve out?
It's because it's a, I mean, it's a divided highway. That's where it divides, and we didn't feel it was, it would be safe for the UTVs to be traveling in that portion of roadway.
So I'm reading this, so if they, they may be operated, roadways are defined, okay, except for, or less, except for that section. So even though that's a 35 because of the layout of that road, that's the part that isn't. Okay. Sounds good. I don't have any questions. I guess my, my biggest concern with this whole thing is just noise, but I guess we'll see. But motorcycles are allowed to, so I-
No, my concern remains that we just don't know how it's going to work until it's actually in operation. And I'm much more for a measured approach. You can always increase it. I, I mean, I, I would still advocate for a much more limited ordinance that, that allows you to increase it later, rather than having to take something away once you figure out that it's not working. We've seen examples of lots of smaller towns that have it, and you know, that may be okay, but I don't know. We don't know how it's going to work in, in the city of this size that's quickly growing and heading towards 50,000. We just don't know, and it takes something away. Once it's there, it's going to be much more difficult. In my opinion, it's much smarter to start very limited and increase as you figure out that it's going to work. Any other? Yes?
Yeah, Your Honor, on that very point, we received some specific, I think, multiple rounds of commentary in written form on that point about starting small and then seeing how it performs and build out. And yeah, certainly, there's logic in, in, in that approach. In short, so we don't overdrive our headlights, and as you have just commented, we have to pull back on this, which then creates a whole bunch of other secondary transactions which are difficult to work through. I think my, so I, we're going to have, this is our initial consideration. How many considerations will this go through? Three? So we might either hear an amplification of that very point that you made, as well as other considerations that haven't yet been brought forward through the public hearing process. The specific question I have, as it is currently drafted, is how were the, how was the fine structure determined? Is that consistent with other fines that are levied for vehicles that are on the road and, and have violations? Or just how was that determined? And I know that might be putting Chad, you on the spot, sorry.
Well, it kind of is, but, and I, I can only answer it honestly. I'm, I'm not real sure on that one. You know, I know what fines are that are levied, maybe not specifically, but honestly, through my career, traffic for motor vehicles, I mean, larger motor vehicles, they've gone up consistently, obviously, over time. I don't know. I can't, that's a hard one for me to answer without seeing, I guess, what other fines are for things like this. But I know motor vehicle laws, because you have, I don't know if court costs and surcharges and things like that are factored into this. It doesn't appear that they are. I know that is with, when, when, when an officer issues a traffic ticket on the street, obviously, the fines go, you have the standard fine, but then you have court costs, you have surcharges, other things get, get tacked on to the citation. This, I don't, and, and maybe Kara could answer that. I think she worked with the chief a little bit, but I think this is just a set fine, if I'm correct.
I'm looking for that right now in the agenda, because I don't recall how we did this one. And I'm not entirely sure that we made changes to that portion, or that we didn't just leave those as they already were. But if you could hold on just one second, and I can bring that up.
While, while you're looking for that, just the thought that I had about the fine structure, we're in essence recognizing these as essentially equivalent to any other motor vehicle on the road, whether it be a motorcycle, one of those three-wheeled spiders, whether it be a small car or a big truck. And so I guess I was just wondering if we have expectation of operation that is equivalent across all classes of vehicles. It, it just seemed to me to be somewhat logical to have an equivalent fine structure, whatever that is. And that, that was the basis of my question.
I can move the question, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
So with a motor vehicle, standing car, you know, people can lose their license. Obviously, that's not through the police department. Is that possible for someone to lose their registration or however they're licensed with the state for municipal infractions? Like, do we, I can put you on the spot. If you can find that out.
Yeah, I was going to say, again, I can't, Councilman Brand, I can't answer you with 100% certainty. But, and, and again, it goes to Councilman Harper's question. Are we treating these like any other motor vehicle? I don't know if this is a fine that would go through the DOT or if it was simply a standard city fine. It's a fair question.
Right, Steve?
Yeah, my, my initial reaction was the fines seemed to be pretty soft. I mean, if one of these UTVs is caught speeding at 50 miles an hour, they're going to get a normal speeding ticket. Is that correct? Okay?
Yes.
So a lot of the other vehicular infractions will apply to them. Some of the ones you outlined are maybe specifically more to the UTVs because of their limitations of where they can go, hours of operations, some of those factors. But again, if we were, if we were to set up a bevy of fines, I would rather be on the, a little on the harsher side than I would on the softer side. So I think it kind of sounds like we'd all be interested to know how those numbers did come about. So especially, the, the one area, the one aspect I have any concern about, if anything, if all of a sudden someone with a UTV thinks they can all of a sudden take it out on the trail system or anything like that, and I'd like to see that fine to be extremely harsh. Okay, so it's one thing, maybe on the highway where they mistaken it, but they know where they're supposed to go and not go. And I anticipate there's only going to be a few bad apples, but there will be. The majority of them will operate as we expect. I'm not expecting hundreds and hundreds of UTVs to all of a sudden be coming into Marion, but it gives more people an opportunity to use them, so I'm okay for the, the overall direction. But the, the fine aspect, I guess I'd like to follow up on a little bit more, maybe discussion at our future meeting.
Yeah, and those are, those are definitely councilmen. Those are things that, I mean, those are the city enforced, the trails and things like that. Obviously, that's not going to be enforced by state law. That, you're right, that is going to be enforced by the city ordinance. So yeah, I mean, what you guys would all determine as the fines, that, that would be told in your court?
I would assume there's already fines for if someone takes a motor vehicle on the trails. Yeah. Maybe need to take it up higher. Ryan had something.
Oh, go ahead, Ryan.
Your Honor, I was just going to say that we'll, for, for Thursday, we'll, we'll come with, I know Chief Kits Miller, when he had worked with Kara on putting this together, had a list of comparables that they were working off of. So we'll see what their fines are, and, and we'll just confirm that state law doesn't restrict what we can do on that, and just have that information ready for you.
Thank you. Yes.
And also, can you add to that, Ryan? This is probably along that line, but again, like, what is the oversight of the state on these vehicles? And the ability for them to pull licenses or not, and what is, how much of it is in our control? And, and what is the state doing for oversight, since this also came down from them with some changes? And then what's that relationship between this? Because it's not DOT, it's DNR, right? I believe.
If, if I could speak just for a second to that, I agree with you, but I also, again, they, when they're on our streets, the traffic laws apply to them as well. So if we were to write them a traffic ticket, those tickets would be monitored by DOT. That would be a traffic violation.
So that's how the relationship is with, so it seems like they are registered through one agency as far as having that permit, license to have it. But the infraction, any infractions or following the state law, they become a vehicle?
Yeah.
Okay, interesting.
Yep.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I'll just throw in a couple of other things, too. I just wanted to make sure, and Chad, I appreciate it. I think what you just said clarified it for me, too. If there is an option for us to make sure that we are reporting to the DMV, I would be the advocate to say that we do, because anything that's reported through on the DMV will also be accredited to their driving record for private passage vehicles. So there, if they are in violation of street ordinance, it carries over to the private, over to their, their valid personal driver's license record as well. So from an insurance standpoint, they would be, the MVR, the motor vehicle report would show all infractions. So seatbelt violations, speeding tickets, all of that do impact their personal driving record as well, too. So I think that would be a worthwhile to make sure that we are going to report that on the DMV site, so that, you know, their, their judgments of operating a UTV also impacts their personal driving privileges as well, too.
Anything else on this item? Oh. Well, so that's, that'll be for on Thursday, sir. Is that okay? This is a work session where we get to ask questions and understand, and then on Thursday, there's an opportunity for members of the public to be able to speak and, and ask questions. And, okay, is that all right? Okay, thanks. Okay. Anything else on this item? So Kara, I know we talked about this a long time ago. What about, I know you tried to explain it to me, but I'm not sure I understood. We can't have a sunset provision, or we can't have some sort of a review, like a temporary period of kind of provisional period, where, and then, and then review it again in a year or something, or?
Our process would be the same. So we would still have to, because it's, it's an ordinance, we have to amend our ordinance. So we would still have to, because it's, it's an ordinance, we have to amend our ordinance. So we would still have to do three readings to make that amendment. And then if we wanted to change that, either adopt it permanently or end it, even with the sunset clause, we'd have to do something at that point in time. So we'd either have to, even if that sunset clause was there, we'd still have to do something.
I get it, but is it allowed?
As far as I know, I, I haven't found anything that speaks directly to it being prohibited, but it is, it, it's just something from a procedural standpoint, it, it wouldn't necessarily do us much. So either.
I get that, but I think that from a operational standpoint, from an expectation standpoint, from a perception standpoint, from all, you know, that it, I don't know, it might make sense because then people know that it's, you know, that, that it is provisional. Even if the, the practical procedure is the same or, you know, no different than just amending it, then we all know that we're going to review it in a year and the public knows we're going to review it in a year. I don't know, I, you know, if we're not going to take a more conservative measured approach, maybe that's one option to consider of, of, of just putting in there, you know, that it's provisional for a year. So, Your Honor. So just, it's, so it's clear in my mind, i- is it possible for us to go through this process now with the stated, publicly stated intent that we're going to review it? Say, come back and, you know, March 1 of next year and assess how it is operated for the balance of the summer, fall and winter? Is, is that, is that a permissible action that a city council can take?
We can always revisit our ordinances. So, but if you mean like have it expire at that point in time? So, but we, we can always do that, we can always flag it for something and have it ready to go so that we take a look at the data at that point in time and say, here's, here's what's happened with it, here are the complaints. Is, is that kind of what you're asking?
Yeah. Well, so I guess you, you've, you have answered my question. We can just, we can go into this cycle of approval and public commentary and then potentially approval with the intent then that we just set on our calendars. You know, nominally, March 1, we're gonna, we're gonna reassess how it performed and make adjustments as necessary. And it ought to be, if, if that's the approach that we take, we ought to be very clear when we promulgate this ordinance, that that is our intent. So, so that nobody's surprised if that's. The, the only other option that I see, and I think this is really where the mayor is going, is, is that we, it seems to me we have some little issues that still aren't yet fully baked and that we would delay a month to, you know, actually go through this process. However, I would just, and, and I'm not necessarily suggesting that, but that puts more onus on setting a interim review date or not an interim of, of a review date, say nine or, or 12 months out. Anyway, I think I'm on the verge of losing anything intelligible that I might say next.
I, I think if we considered going down that road, we're gonna have to be careful about what that timeline is. I'm not sure I'm in favor of going down that road at all. But if we consider that, I think we need to be very conscious about what that timeline should be because by the time we have three readings, you know, we're gonna be two thirds of the way through the summer, we're gonna be into August. Okay, so there's not a lot of summer usage by this ordinance for 2022. So if you wanted to look at all of the seasons, you're gonna have to go all the way through summer of 2023 to get a full year under your belt. So, you know.
Your Honor, I, Steve, I appreciate that in, in terms of trying to get a, an annual cycle of utilization. I'm just wondering if in fact we wouldn't, in reality, get the diagnostics we need even in six months. Because it's hopefully going to be a good fall. And hopefully, if we have a, the, you know, the start of winter like we had last year, we're going to be having balmy weather in December. And, and then we, you know, we'll have the, whatever natural weather we have for winter. And I would expect that they would get some use in winter as well. So, you know, I just think maybe even on a, on a reduced utilization timeframe, setting a review date sometime in early spring of, of next year, we'd still get a fair amount of diet utilization and diagnostics about how well it worked. Anything else, Sarah?
I agree with, I want to find a way to make this work for the folks who have been very, very professional, very communicative, very respectful in how this is, has been worked on with the city and, and folks who have asked for this. Because I think they've just done a fabulous job of how you kind of grassroots something in the conversation. And I appreciate that back. And I'm trying to find ways to make this work so that we can try this. Because I think, like you said, the majority of this is not going to be an issue. This is going to be a great recreational piece that our residents are going to enjoy, that have wanted this, and we can move forward. I think we're all trying to like intercept what we know is going to be people who are nervous about it and how we kind of work through that and keep everybody moving forward. So I'm kind of like you, like, I, I, I know the folks we've been working with are responsible individuals when it comes to moving this forward and how they will treat this opportunity. It's the others. And I don't know that we can forecast everything that might happen. But being very vocal in setting the expectation that we are not just throwing the doors open here and that we're consciously waiting into how we can assess if there's changes. Kind of think about like the fireworks or everything else that we've had kind of come up and down and back and forth within the community. So, but that we still keep the opportunity open for those that have brought this forward. At the same time, we don't blindside people if something goes wrong or there's, there's questions, that it becomes too big of a deal to try to course correct it and we're too far down a road. So I'm kind of with you, if there's an, if there's a date, we just say, even if it's the end of next summer, like even if we give enough time to just say, listen, we're gonna run with this and see what happens. And we're trusting everybody to kind of monitor and, and be responsible, there's always going to be the bad apple, but for the most part, that it's working and we can reassure the rest of the residents who may be nervous that this is going to be okay and that we're checking it. I think that's a responsible piece for us, but I want to make sure we are balancing both.
So Sarah, I think you and I have similar thoughts on this. I guess we will understand, I think, by virtue of chiefs giving us some feedback about how it's performing from their perspective throughout the year. And if we see it taking a nosedive to the bad, we can accelerate our review. And so, you know, we may then e- end up achieving kind of what Steve wanted is, you know, to give a full cycle, annual cycle of utilization and make some judgments at that point. So I just think as long as we go into this with, with some mindset that we're going to take a, a good, hard look at performance here at a later date and leave that in fact open based on the performance that we actually see come before us or before the city. Okay. Anyone else? I appreciate everybody having the discussion about it. Okay. We'll have the public hearing on Thursday. Item D1 is next.
Good evening, Council. So we have a contract here for, for removal of the timber in Legion Park. So we have a 20 acres parcel area of woodland within Legion that we originally had a salvage harvest contract for, but due to inactivity and then also lack of salvageable materials, it, it didn't make sense to continue to proceed in that fashion. So we did get other proposals to proceed with just cleaning up the area. So this is Miller logging, they come highly recommended, especially from Lynn County Conservation. They've done work over there with dealing with the DeRachel cleanup. There's going to be some acres within this parcel that will be a full clear out or clear cut. And then some parcel or some areas that will be more of a thinning out. So compared to the canopy from before DeRachel to when we're finished with this project, we're looking at 50 to 60% of loss within this area. We will follow up with this area with replanting and strategic replanting with long range planning to have this area become a certified arboretum in the future. This, uh, this item can be paid for either a general, general fund dollars that was either previously set aside for FEMA. As we know that FEMA was, is covering up the, the local share of 15%, but we'll have to do some reconciliation once all the FEMA projects have been processed and awarded and then, or out of the urban forestry fund. Any questions?
Questions for Seth? And these are all, I mean, just for the record, these are all trees that are damaged that need, need to be removed.
Yeah, so the, this is going to be damaged materials and trees that are damaged of a liability. So and everything is going to be processed on site and the material will be used for, for either new trees or for soft trails within Legion.
Leaving all the trees made to the ordinary person appear to be perfectly healthy. They're fractured, they're, or they have.
There's, yeah, there's a lot of things wrong with lost, lost canopy split trunks. And then also with these woodland areas, when it opens up, you know, a lot of these are, are long leaders that just with a smaller wind, mile per hour wind, they don't withhold very well, so.
Okay. Any other questions on that? All right, then on to engineering.
Yes, Your Honor, so E1 and E2 are the same topics. The first one is receiving and filing the correspondence and then E2 is actual action. So we did discuss this previously and city council gave staff no further direction. The property owners have discussed it and they do like the option that we proposed to them. However, they would not only like the 6,682 that we've offered them already, but they would like Nathan Caraway's allowance is what they're calling it, in addition to the amount that we've offered on the initial offer. So as city staff, we feel that we've already given them a fair offer by offering the one service. Nathan Caraway's building is right next to the sewer and doesn't need that service. I understand that the School of Rock and with Matt Higgins, it's, it's hard to get that service and it comes at a cost, but it's between two property owners. And I don't believe that the city should be getting in the middle of that. We're already offering some money, some help during the Seventh Avenue project. And if this project wasn't even happening, we wouldn't even be involved at this point. There's a lot of other aspects. Bill, if you go to the next slide.
Sorry.
Okay.
When you say the group, Mike, who's the group?
So the group would be the three property owners. So you have two buildings, so you have the old building, that's Nathan Caraway building. You have the School of Rock that is the basement and the first floor of the seventh and 10th building. And then Matt Higgins actually has a horizontal condo that's above School of Rock. So those, that's the group that we're referring to. So the green line that's shown up on the, the screen. So right now, so right now, the, the sewer comes out of the back of the School of Rock building that serves both the upstairs, the downstairs and the, the School of Rock building and goes through Caraway's property and dump empties into the sanitary sewer that then goes north, south in this alley. So the green is what we're proposing to put in as part of the project and then giving them a credit and they're paying for the rest of it. They're simply saying, well, we want that credit and we would like Nathan Caraway's allowance as well.
Okay.
So staff's recommendation is to give them the initial offer that we offer them.
Right.
But city council, if you feel that we should give them more money to help facilitate that, we can certainly amend it on Thursday to a different agreement, but that is what staff would recommend.
I'm, I'm with the staff's recommendation. Anybody have questions? Go ahead.
I guess I'm confused on what the, the other 6,800 is for that they request.
So what they're basically saying is because Nathan doesn't, we're not putting in a new sewer for Nathan, that he gets an allowance that doesn't really exist, is just more city money, but that's what they're calling it. And so he's saying because he's not using that money to go ahead and give it to School of Rock as part of their service. So he's just wanting to allocate money that he thinks would have gone to him to School of Rock.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions?
And on Thursday, originally Greg was going to be here, but he's not. He has reached out to the city clerk to see if he can add additional correspondence to present. But he was going to be here on Thursday to present to city council, but he has a word conflict that came up.
Go ahead, yeah, so. On, so they've agreed to the routing that's shown in the green, the diagram. If there was a bill, if, if Mr. Caraway had a building there, none of this activity would, would alter his service provisions, is, is that correct?
So what Mr. Caraway is saying is right now that sewer service goes through his property to the sanitary sewer because before Caraway's building actually dumped into the School of Rock building and then dumped back under the school, or the Caraway building and went to the west. So they were a combined sewer, one, one service for multiple buildings. So really, it's a, it's an issue between two property owners. This, we do have these other places in the old part of town where it was just easier to wire off the existing service rather than run a new service. Today, we make everyone have their own service. So we don't have this type of issue so that if one blocks the sewer because of what they're dumping down the drain, it doesn't affect the other property owner. But there's, there are a few services out there that are shared services. And so it's not a recommendation to keep that service. It's just a matter of how much does the city get involved? And I feel like we're already involved enough at this point.
Yes, so to make clear, so when Nathan, if Nathan puts a building on that site in the future, he just going to connect
to the sewer right?
Sewer in the alley.
Yep.
And what we're do, what we've been doing with all of the other businesses is allowing, helping them with one connection, which would normally come out from their building out to the street.
Yeah, so what we've done, and that's where we came up with that $6,000, is because on all the other structures, we want a new lateral underneath our new street so that we're not having to tear up our brand new streetscape.
Yep.
So that's where we came up with that value is this is the value that we're giving everybody else. And that's where like, well, Nathan Caraway has that value too, and I want to give that, but it's not really his to give.
That's right. I, I agree with your recommendation. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so that takes care of E1, E2, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, E3?
So E3, if we can go to the next slide. So previously last year, we applied for three projects to the Lynn County Cedar Rapids ARPA program and we got denial letters on all three. They do automatically get put into the next round of projects, but these are our highest ranked projects from the HGR report that has been presented several times. And those will likely be done with city ARPA money, so that'll be a future conversation that we'll have. So basically, let's say that they did award us projects one, it's our highest priority. We can't modify it to another project, you know, we have to do the actual. We can't modify it to another project, you know, we have to do the actual project you apply for. You can't say, we want to build this and then decide, no, we're going to spend the money for this over here. So we're assuming that we will be denied again. And so we're applying for a separate program. So this is the Christopher Creek Upgrade and the deadline is the 15th. If you can go to the next slide. So this is right from the HGR report. So Christopher Creek, the area over here, and it's just upgrading the segment here. It is a $2.3 million upgrade to do that. It's only six tenths of a mile, but it's adding additional 30 million gallons per day MGD to the existing flow, which is three times the current capacity in that area. But this was project number six in the ranking of priorities in the HGR report. So we may or may not get this ARPA money from Lynn County Cedar Rapids group, but it's worth at least throwing in an application.
Yeah, Mike, I really, you know, I support this application. As I just looked at this, the general question I have, and you know, maybe I ought to just suspend the question until a later date when you're actually planning to go dig this in, is how does this sewer line intersect with Plumwood Court Northeast? It looks like it comes in direct proximity of some homes.
Yeah, so that's something that we would, when we do the actual design. So this is really easy, just draw a line on a piece of paper and say, upgrade the line. So once, if we got the money, then we would actually spend the time to do the survey and actually put together the plans. But at this point, you got to have the money before you spend time doing any of that.
Okay, all right. So I was premature in asking the question.
Yep. If we get the money, we'll figure out how to build it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then that, is there any, are there any questions on F1? That's the second consideration. All right, we'll move on then to the discussions. First one is floodplain development permit.
Yes, Your Honor, so this is me again. So this is just basically for public information. So the city has a city lot on Indian Creek Road about two houses north of this one. And so Culvers basically came in for an application for a hold harmless to use that lot as a storage area. And with that, we found out what the improvements were. And basically, they're doing some grading in the 100-year floodplain. And so with that, they have to have a floodplain permit. So they have hired an engineer that looked at it to make sure that we're not raising the floodplain. They are not in the floodway, which is not allowed, just in the floodplain. And so basically, there's some improvements and some retaining walls that they're building in their backyard. And then they're dishing out an area to take away from that imbalance in the water. So as the floodplain manager, other duties as assigned as a city engineer, I approve this application, but just for public awareness, we always bring it to a city council meeting so that the public is aware of what's going on.
Okay, questions? Thanks for that. All right, then the next item. Drive-through stacking and design requirements.
Yes, as we've recently spoke with the councils, I guess it's been a couple of months, but we talked about drive-through standards and we just want to bring back the ordinance that incorporated the number of the comments the council had. And then we did go through and look at our comparable cities to see what their ordinance say. We are proposing and have listed a public hearing for the Planning Commission next Tuesday night regarding the ordinance. The ordinance was attached to the memo and that would then come to the city council the first meeting in August. Really, and we could just walk through the slides. The first one here just really identifies where drive-throughs are permitted and where they're conditional uses. One is the BR district is where they're permitted, which is primarily our four-lane divided highway areas. And then the UC1 area is the east end of Seventh Avenue extending about to about 31st Street. So where we've got a couple of drive-throughs currently. And so those are the areas where they're permitted. The other districts, the other business and commercial districts that are listed, they're conditional, which means they go to the Planning Commission for review and to the zoning board of adjustment for final authorization or approval or denial. Next slide. So in review of this, I think a lot of it comes down to the way the site is designed. And so we've tried to accommodate a number of different uses and then stacking before and after the menu board. And you can see them here and they were in the packet. I'm not going to read through them unless there's a specific question on one of them. What we've found is these are primarily concerns or the primary concern generally happens when a new business opens and popularity drives that. I think everybody can remember when I just drew a blank, but Blair's Ferry, the Popeye's Chicken opened and they had traffic backed up on Blair's Ferry Road for, you know, 20 cars. We, of course, had our issues with Dunkin' Donuts. And so we've put some parameters in there that they, and I think this is the best one, is that they can't enter and exit, enter or access the drive-through lane directly from a public right of way. And that's through a design review process. So if you were standing, if you're wanting to get in line at Dunkin' Donuts, you can stack directly into the street. What we did when we changed that was made them directed the traffic so it had to stack in their internal parking lot. So we can handle that through site design. And we would do that because the ordinance now says that they have to, they can't directly stack from a public right of way. So that's one piece of this that I think is going to be very important. And then we've also got standards in place as indicated here. We didn't find that there was anything exorbitant, like there wasn't 15 stalls needed for a coffee shop. Like that was just not something that was identified anywhere. Next slide. So just some examples, we went to a minimum watt size of 10,000 square feet. We've got some setbacks and some corner setbacks. I think this is a good example of one that functions well. And this is the Starbucks. You can see they've got the way the drive-through lane, it stacks around the building and not necessarily internally. You can see there's a number of cars. I don't know how many exactly, but if you've been through that drive-through, they've accommodated that. Most of the times, the retailers, I'm going to say most of the time, most of the time, the retailers accommodate for what their business model tells them to accommodate for because it's in their best interest to have the appropriate spaces. But the ordinance will provide us the opportunity to kind of look at that through the site plan review process. And then the next slide there, please. You can see that we've got minimum stacking space sizes. So we really went into a great bit of detail about how that is designed and developed. And we also ensure that there's pedestrian access is maintained. So one of those that's always been a little bit of a problem and it's reopened now is Earl's Ice Cream, but it was a parlor city where the seating areas on the other side of the drive-throughs. So want to make sure that that's highlighted within a site plan. Sometimes they use colored concrete somewhere to a crosswalk in a street. You know, you want to accent that area so it's noticeable, but we did still add into the ordinance. So pretty straightforward, just laying out some general guidelines in a site plan review process. So any questions on that? I'd be happy to answer. Steve?
Yeah, the question that comes to my mind, so obviously, a lot of this pertains to new development. So when you have an existing business that wants to add a drive-through, then is that, that'll be a new permit. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yep.
So they would have to follow the same guidelines as a new business.
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, I think of one that probably would not make it under this, I mean, the Freeze down on 10th Street. Love the place. I'll go on record, I like the rice cream. But again, anytime we go there, we're seeing cars sitting on 10th Street or 11th Street, excuse me, 11th Street. But, and that's not a good situation because sometimes they're sitting in the middle heading south and sometimes they're just sitting in the street going north. And so you get a little bit of that everywhere and I go, just not a good situation because they can only get three stacked. And then you got cars sitting in the street. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure I clearly understood that. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Tom. You have one more item. It's next one yours too.
The next item, it's just a quick item for the city council, just to let you know that, and I think Mr. Waller put in the in-focus, the conversation on zoning, coming back up to community-wide zoning. We're going to start proceeding with the rezoning of Ward 1 and 3. These are the south side of town and the east side of town. We did the other two wards last year and we did quite an extensive public outreach. We did postcards, we did open houses before all the meetings. We had standalone meetings and we really had not a lot of responses. I think we're going to get more responses to this area. But we also felt like we could handle those responses doing the two wards at the same time instead of separating them out. So we're proposing to start this through the process, hold at least one meeting here in July and then start the Planning Commission in August. And what we'll do is we'll hold open houses prior to that meeting where staff will be available and answer questions if someone has a specific comment or concern. And we'll be doing postcards, so on and so forth, to get the word out on what's going on.
Okay, any questions on that? Is that it, Tom?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Well, final item on the agenda for this evening is a closed session. Before we adjourn to the closed session, just a couple announcements. Want to say congratulations to Dave Hockett today, his anniversary of 22 years with the city. So congratulations to Dave.
That means he's put up with me for 21.
So that's why he deserves extra congratulations. We appreciate his work on behalf of the city. And also just a reminder that Peg Pierce passed away. Her visitation is tomorrow from 4:00 to 7:00 and the funeral is the following day at 10:30 in the morning. Okay, then we'll have the motion for the closed session.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under Section 21.51(c) of the Code of Iowa and personal matters as permitted under Section 21.51i of the Code of Iowa. We are addressing three separate matters.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under Section 21.51(c) of the Code of Iowa and personal matters as permitted under Section 21.51i of the Code of Iowa. Any questions or discussions before we vote? And let's have the legal counsel's opinion, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matters for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code Section 21.51(c) and 21.51i.
Okay, thank you. Let's have the roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Asli?
Yes.
Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Ms. Mensah?
Yes.
Mr. Sternet?
Yes.
Thank you. We're adjourned to closed session. We'll return to open session upon completion. Thanks for joining us.